Which is a update on the response to COVID. And I'd like to ask our city manager to begin the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you. I'm pleased to be here this evening. I will not be providing our typical COVID-19 update response. Tonight, we're very fortunate to have Dr. Rob Oldham, who is fairly new to this role. He's certainly been in the area for a long time. Dr. Oldham is not only our Director of Health and Human Services, but he's also our interim health officer. With all the questions around vaccine and vaccine rollout, we thought this was very timely. And we're really pleased to have him and members of his team here from Placer County to provide the update and absolutely stand for any questions that we get from the council or from members of the community. I will be here as well. And again, I'd like to thank him and his team for being here this evening. And without further ado, I will turn it over to Dr. Oldham.
Great, thanks, Dom. And thanks, Mayor Briskoni and council members. And I appreciate the invitation to provide a brief update to your council on Placer County's HHS response to the COVID pandemic. I just, as Dom said, returned to Placer County Health and Human Services about four months ago after working for a while for Sutter Health. And I regret to admit that in my previous five and a half year stint as Placer County Health Officer and Public Health Director, I never actually addressed this council. So I guess one of the silver linings of this pandemic has been that it's made it just imperative that we improve our collaboration and communication. The city of Roseville has over a third of Placer County's population. Sometimes we make distinctions between county and city government, and I guess those distinctions can be important at times. But when it comes to Health and Human Services, we are Roseville's Health Department. We've enjoyed great partnerships and relationships between the city of Roseville and Placer County Health and Human Services over the years, and especially during this pandemic. And we're committed to even closer collaboration going forward. In fact, we would be delighted to return at any time in the future to provide additional COVID updates. And in addition to COVID updates, would also love to provide your council with more general overview of our department and any particular programs or issues you'd like to hear more about. We're proud of the work that our six divisions are doing and more than 800 employees doing to help build a healthier Placer County together. A lot of that work is happening in and around Roseville, and we would love to share more about that work and get regular input from this council and the residents you represent. So with that, this evening, I will provide your council with a brief update on COVID-related data and metrics. And then I'll hand off to our Public Health Manager, Mike Romero, who will talk about the topic that everyone seems to want to hear more about, our COVID vaccine distribution. See, the slides are up, so you can move on to the next slide, please. And this slide shows our testing positivity rate over time, which is the percent of the tests that are sent to a lab that come back positive. The bad news is that our current testing positivity rate, as you'll see here on the graph, is about the highest it's ever been and indicates that we have widespread community transmission here in Placer County. The good news is that this number has not really gone up dramatically in the last month, indicating that perhaps the spread of COVID in our community has begun to plateau, albeit still at a very high level. Next slide, please. So similarly, this slide shows that the level of hospitalizations due to COVID also seems to be coming down a bit. But again, hospitalizations remain at a very high level. Next slide, please. There's been a lot of attention on ICU bed capacity, particularly as it relates to the trigger for the regional stay-at-home orders. ICU bed capacity is a little less standardized than some of the other metrics that we track. And so it's a little harder to derive meaning from exactly what the numbers mean when we look at these. We do know that our hospitals are often treating patients who are very sick in their general acute care beds now. Many of these patients probably would have been admitted to the ICU six months or a year ago, but now are being treated in general acute care beds instead. So it's a little tough to make meaningful comparisons, ICU numbers over time. But I do think it's safe to say that our ICUs in particular and our critical care bed capacity in general is stretched about as much as it ever has been, with no real immediate relief in sight. Next slide, please. Here is an even more somber slide that looks at the number of deaths due to COVID by month. As you can see, we saw three times as many deaths from COVID in December as in November, which was previously the month with the most deaths in this pandemic. And unfortunately, when we look at January, the data shows that we're probably on track to have more deaths from COVID in January than in December. Next slide, please. This slide is to remind us of the state's COVID tier framework and where Placer now falls on that framework. We stopped talking so much about some of these metrics while we were under the regional stay-at-home order. But now that we're no longer under that regional stay-at-home order, we're back in the purple tier, which is the most restrictive tier in the framework, the one that doesn't allow things like indoor dining. But as we're coming off, I think we're going to get more questions about that. People are asking me, you know, when are we going to go to the red tier, for instance, which is the next least restrictive tier? You can look at the numbers here to say, although we're in purple, I guess we're in deep purple. So our adjusted case rate and testing positivity rate are still very high. It's probably going to be quite a bit longer that we'll be here in the purple tier. But hopefully, we can prevent from going back into a regional stay-at-home order again. And then before I hand off, if you can bring the slides down, before I hand off to Mike to talk about vaccinations, I just want to take the opportunity to call attention to really the heroic work of our healthcare workers in responding to this pandemic. They were already, prior to the pandemic, stretched very thin with historic shortages and levels of burnout. But this pandemic has forced them to continually adjust and sacrifice really over the last 10 months or more with physically and emotionally draining workdays and very few days off. So we just can't thank our healthcare workers enough. If you ask them how we can thank them, most don't care too much about kudos. They just ask us to take simple steps to avoid overwhelming them with very sick patients. So remember to mask up, wash your hands, keep your distance, and avoid gatherings as much as possible. And with that, I will take down my slides, and I will hand off to Mike Romero, who's going to talk more about vaccinations. So I guess you can bring up the slide.
Yeah, bringing up the slides again. Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Mike.
So it's really nice to be here as a Roseville resident myself. You know, our response for us started in mid-February, tracking travelers from China. And it's amazing to think that, you know, 11 months later, we're focusing on vaccine, which is really the public health dream in dealing with a virus. So we started, we got our vaccine in December, and we're following the state's framework of how to prioritize folks for vaccination. The slide here shows a nice graphic of what that framework looks like. We're in Phase 1A, which is primarily healthcare with a lot of subgroups of healthcare. And because of the rate at which we're moving through Phase 1A, we were open, we were able to open Tier 1, 2, and 3. So we are here in, you know, the latter part of January, focusing on all three tiers in Phase 1A. We get a lot of questions about when are we moving to the next phase, Phase 1B. It's really hard, it's really hard to determine because we're not getting a regular allocation of vaccine. No one is, not a predictable allocation. One of the changes since we developed this slide just last week was that opening up to 65 and older. And so that's a part of 1B. That's exciting for us because of the risk of mortality to the over-65 population. It also makes, you know, getting appointment very challenging with that many more people trying to fill relatively limited numbers of slots. So we're going to be in Phase 1A for a while. We're going to be supporting 65 and older for a while. This framework that you see is also likely to change. The governor's office throughout the COVID response has recognized the need to adjust. And so don't be surprised if you see adjustments to these phases as well. Next slide, please. So how are we, how are we addressing the vaccine administration and distribution in our county? So there's a lot, the first thing is to have partnerships, right? There's nothing about COVID that any of us does alone. You can see from this graphic that these are the different groups so far that we're working with. The Tier 1 of Phase 1A started with the hospitals, the three hospitals in Placer County, plus Tahoe Forest Health System up in Truckee, as they serve the North Tahoe community as well. So they started off vaccinating their employees. They're on their second doses right now. A few clinics, like Chapadae and Western Sierra Medical Clinic, have also vaccinated their staff and are looking for opportunities to vaccinate their patients as well. One of the partnerships that we're very proud of is with the pharmacy community. CVS and Walgreens are busy vaccinating all the long-term care facilities in Placer County, skilled nursing, assisted living, and the residential care facilities. That's a lot of facilities. And CVS and Walgreens, this is a federal partnership, but these are mobile clinics. And the logistics of doing mobile clinics is extraordinary when you consider the number of facilities that are impacted. In Roseville alone, there's a fair number of skilled nursing, assisted living, and residential care facilities. So this partnership is imperative to reach those who are most vulnerable. These, we don't normally see the numbers from these. It's hard to track when they've gone to certain locations, how many people they've vaccinated, et cetera. But this is a huge lift from these two big pharmaceutical retailers, right? And we certainly appreciate that. We're also proud of our partnership with Safeway. Safeway has eight pharmacies from Lincoln to Kings Beach, and they are vaccinating folks Monday through Friday. And it's an important partnership because it gives us geographic distribution and giving people an opportunity to get vaccinated from their neighborhood pharmacy. We expect other pharmacies to join this. We're in communication with Save Mart and Walmart, so look for those relatively soon. And of course, we have our clinic at the grounds in Roseville. We're very proud of that location, the partnership with the team at Placer Valley Tourism, David Adaway and his team. It's a premier location for events like this. We have responded to emergencies there before, and we're happy to be there again. For those of you who are not familiar with the details, these are appointment-only. That can be found on our website. I'm proud, we've been there, this is our third week. I'm happy to say that yesterday, we vaccinated 1,000, 1,080 people between about 9:30 and 3:30 yesterday. One of my messages to the Roseville community is, I know it's hard to get an appointment, keep trying. We only open up appointments for clinics that we know we have vaccine. And if you have an appointment, please don't get there early. On time is sufficient. Getting there early creates lines that are unnecessary. If you've been to the clinic already, I'm sure you'll say that it's been, it's being run very professionally, very calm, and it's being very successful. Next slide. So there's a lot of question about, you know, about all the doses we've received. Have we utilized every dose? So folks need to remember that we get allocated once a week. We never know what we're going to receive. The amounts are variable. And when they distribute to us, we get first doses, and then we get second doses. So we have to sit on the second doses so that, you know, 28 days later, if you have Moderna, or 21 days later, if you have Pfizer, that you'll get your booster dose. So as you see numbers on television, for the most part, they're looking at the total amount of vaccine that have gone to either the state or the counties. They typically don't look at first doses. So we're doing very well at utilizing most of our first doses. Like I said, we don't schedule clinics at the grounds unless we know we have vaccine, and we're doing quite well. I wish, frankly, we have far more capacity than we have vaccine right now. I'm afraid that's going to be the story for a little while, until we get more, until more is available. And with that, I think that's the end of my presentation.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I'll just say again, we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Would love to come back. So happy to come back anytime and happy to answer any questions you'll have. Thank you.
Thank you mu, thank you very much, Dr. Oldham. Does the council have any questions of either Dr. Oldham or Mr. Romero?
Mayor Briskoni, I just had one from Pauline Ricucci. If you get a first dose at the grounds, do you get your second dose there also? Do you make an appointment again?
Yes, and I know that's, because, you know, some places are scheduling the second dose at the time of the appointment. We're, and Mike can speak more to this, using kind of a text and email alert for those second doses at the ground. So a little bit, it depends on where you get your, where you get vaccinated. But right now at the grounds, we're doing that with our, you know, with our email or text reminder. Is there anything you'd like to say about that, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, so anyone, you should feel, rest assured that we're reserving our second doses. There's been a lot of thought about, should you, should we dive into the second doses? Utilize them as first doses? We're tempted to do so, but it's like borrowing money from yourself. You know, it's kind of a challenge. So we will preserve the second doses. We will communicate those who got vaccinated to schedule their next appointment, or their next appointment. And just, I mentioned the days after. So if you get Moderna vaccine, you get your second dose anytime after the 28th day. If it's Pfizer, it's anytime after the 21st day. So a lot of folks are hung up on the precision of 21 and 28. It's just, it's just not true. So anytime after those dates is when the booster will have the intended impact.
Thank you, because I had people ask me. Thank you very much.
Does the council have any other questions?
Scott has a question. Here's his hand up.
Councilmember Albert?
Thank you. I'm just curious what the county is planning to do. You know, right now, we have a challenge with people not wanting to wear masks. And a lot of the community is cooperating, but there's some that just refuse, and they're being difficult. And now I'm just imagining the, I've been vaccinated, therefore I don't have to wear a mask excuse. How are we going to message that out? And I just worry about gatherings and that being the reason for people getting together. And I just wonder if you guys could address that, because that makes me a little nervous.
Yeah, thank you. It's an important thing, you know, thing that we're going to have to message. And that's the fear, is, you know, as Mike says, this is really exciting for public health to have a vaccine. But the fear is that, you know, that we start to let down our guard because, you know, as people get vaccinated, they think that they, you know, don't need to wear a mask, that they can, you know, ease off the distancing. And it's really not the case. So the, you know, one is there's really no way to know who's been vaccinated and who's not. But also, the science really isn't there to say, you know, that, you know, that that's going to, you know, significantly decrease the risk of transmission. We know, we know that it will decrease the risk of people getting sick, but it's still, you know, to be seen what impact. We think it'll have some impact on transmission. But for sure, and that, and the, what we need, what we're planning is kind of a campaign, taking, you know, some of the mask-up campaign that we've had in partnership with Placer Community Foundation and other organizations, and kind of tailoring that now for you've been vaccinated, and kind of re-upping that messaging around populations who have been vaccinated. One, getting out the message, because one of the things we haven't talked about is some vaccine hesitancy. And so we still have large numbers of people who aren't sure. I don't, and they're not declining the vaccine, but they're just not sure if they want it or not. And so we're going to address that, especially to make sure, you know, in certain populations that we, that we make sure, that are prone to having negative consequences from COVID, that we get, deliver those messages into those communities. But also, as they get the vaccine, to make sure they understand kind of the implications of that. So we have materials when people get vaccinated about that. CDC has put out some good information around that. But I think we're going to have a lot of work to do in coming months. Mike, anything else you'd like to say on that?
You know, just to reiterate that, you know, when you get vaccinated, you should feel good that your risk of mortality is significantly lowered. You should feel good that your risk of morbidity of getting sick or being, getting very sick is significantly reduced. There's never a zero risk. And, but the question is, and we need time for science to figure out, I've been vaccinated, you know, can I still get infected? And therefore, can I still be infectious? And, you know, in January, we don't know the answer to that question. We, you know, the scientific community needs time to figure that out. And I think ultimately, that will impact the CDC's recommendations about mask-wearing. So I think it's really one of those, the jury's still out. And so, you know, my request to residents would be, be patient, look for, really, the leadership from the CDC recommending when it's, when it's time to put the masks away.
Mayor, I may have some questions after the public has an opportunity to ask questions.
I think right now, we're doing council comments. And now would be a great time if you are comfortable asking your questions, Councilmember Howard Schout, or Vice Mayor Howard Schout.
Yeah, I have three questions. And a question you often get, Dr. Oldham, is, can you explain ICU capacity?
Yeah, well, I think the short answer is no. It's really complicated. I can try. But, you know, the capacity, basically, we have a variable number of ICU beds in Placer County at any one time. And at least, what the metric is based off of staffed ICU beds. And so that's the big, it's, you know, the big challenge is with staffing. And so we obviously have variability in the demand for ICU care, but we also have kind of the supply, the number of staffed beds changing from day to day. So that in itself is complicated. And, but then, as I mentioned, figuring out what does it mean relative to, you know, it's not, it's just not something, ICU bed capacity, you know, I know that was a trigger for the regional stay-at-home order, and it's a perfectly good trigger, right? I mean, it's an important thing. And when we look at other places like, you know, in LA and the Central Valley that had, you know, very limited, like zero ICU bed capacity, it's scary. And that's, we know that it can affect the standard of care even that can be delivered when we don't have enough ICU beds. So I think it's important to look at it, but I, the reason, yeah, it's just, it's not a very standardized metric in tracking what the capacity is over time. It's not something that we've, like some of the other metrics we've been tracking for a long period of time, we can tell you, yeah, this is what it was in June, and this is what it is today. And so therefore, we can make some valid comparisons. It's just really tough to do with the ICU bed capacity.
Well, see if I got, I'm a good student here. Somebody wants to explain to me that once you get to 30% of your ICU beds with COVID-positive cases, then for every percent you go up, you lower that availability by half a percent because there are other needs for those ICU beds beyond COVID. Is that, is that a fair characterization? You know, we've, stuff has stroked in, stuff has stroked in the community, car accidents, you know, heart attacks.
Absolutely, yeah. And again, that, even prior to COVID, we had, you know, huge variability in this, you know, the number of people who are in the ICU over time. There are certain seasons, like January is just normally a season of the year where you see more ICU hospitalization. So we have some, look at ICU hospitalizations, but this capacity, looking at the percentage of the beds that are open is not something that the hospitals are used to reporting to. So we can't go back and kind of look at those over time.
So last Friday, I got my first dose of Moderna. And then I noticed this week, and I want to make sure I understand this correctly, because of 10 cases in San Diego, you, out of a super abundance of caution, the whole state, I think, not just you, shifted to Pfizer? Do you use?
No.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so it was just one particular lot of the Moderna that was suspended. So they, the state, actually, the CDC and the state said, let's pause to see, investigate what happened. There were a handful of people, I think it was at a very large mass vaccination clinic in San Diego. And so that investigation, I think, is still underway. I'm hearing that likely that'll be, that investigation will be done very soon. And so that's just one of the lots of Moderna. We continue to use other Moderna lots, such as one particular lot of Moderna. We just happened in Placer County to have 2,900 of those, of doses from that lot. So a big chunk. And what Mike didn't say, he was saying, oh, yeah, we're, we're not, because we did look at using second doses as first doses. That was what the state had recommended to us to consider, given the vaccine limitations. And so we were actually looking at doing that. And that was the lot, you know, we were planning on utilizing for our clinic on Tuesday. So we were able to really scramble. And thanks to our hospital partners to, at the, as Mike says, you don't do anything in COVID alone. And so working with our hospital partners were able to fill that clinic. Otherwise, we were completely out of vaccine. So that's, that's how close it was. And that's the reason why we, at the last minute, said, well, because we'd already told those people who were coming on Tuesday to the grounds that they would be getting Moderna. And so that's the reason we sent out the release saying, actually, you're going to be getting Pfizer, because that's all we, all we could borrow from our hospitals.
Well, I got to compliment you on your resiliency, your stamina, first of all, right? Because, you know, it was last Wednesday when the governor announced, but, you know, 65 and above, right? You know, I called my doctor, you know, I happened to be talking to my neighbor earlier in the day, and this is my question. He was having a hard time connecting with the physician group to know when he was in the queue. I think you've gotten that. Could you talk about that? Has that become a little more seamless? He happened to be with an independent physicians group. Is that, is that more notification going out to folks like that? So they know, their doctors know?
Yeah, and it's, I don't know if that goes as far as seamless. There's still a lot of seams in the system. And so we are, you know, trying to fill it. Because it's just, we have, in the 65 and up category in Placer County, we estimate about 80,000 people. So all of a sudden, we had, and actually, large numbers. And there's vaccine hesitancy among other populations. But anecdotally, not so much vaccine hesitancy among seniors. And so they're ready to get their vaccine and all, you know, everyone all together, you know, calling. Unfortunately, the scheduling, and we haven't talked much about the online scheduling, but that's been something that we really warn the state about. You know, we, this is the state's system for scheduling really is not great for going in and for the general public. We were using it primarily for the 1A, the employment-based scheduling. And it was clunky, but it was working fine. But with this mass number of thousands of people trying to schedule all at once, it's really been challenging. And we're also anecdotally, you know, not anecdotally, we're getting lots of complaints about that clunkiness, particularly among older adults[1640.12] about that clunkiness, particularly among older adults and people who don't even have access to computer, you know, internet connections in order to go in and schedule. So we're working with 211 to try to come up with kind of additional supports to make sure, so that the, the online scheduling isn't a barrier, isn't further exacerbating kind of health disparities that we already see in far as who, who's getting the vaccine. Want to make sure that it's available to all of our residents.
And Rob, so that, that system that Rob describes as clunky, we know that the state is going to change that system. We don't have a timeline, but expect that to change. So you might be scheduling your second dose, it might be a different system. For, for residents who are struggling, whether it's using your computer or, or making appointment, you know, I, I recommend that, you know, find, find a loved one, a friend who's very computer comfortable and ask for their help. As I mentioned earlier, we don't open up appointments until we have vaccine for clinics. Unfortunately, that creates this, you know, unintended rush of, of scheduling. So if you're, if you're having trouble, find someone to help you out. I wish that there was a, an easy way to schedule everyone in, in a, in a fair and equitable way. Right now, it's, you know, who can schedule first and the fastest. So one of the things you won't see from us, we hope, is, is, is long lines, long lines of cars interrupting city streets in Roseville. That's the value of the appointment-only model. Without that, we'd have, you know, countless individuals and cars. And that's not good for, traffic's not good for public safety. You see that in other communities, you've seen that on the news, the long lines. We don't intend to do that. That's why we're committed to the schedule. It really is the best thing to do. It also guarantees that you're going to have vaccine when you show up. So we've gotten a lot of questions and criticism, why aren't you doing it this way? Why aren't you doing this that way? We have a lot of experience running vaccine clinics. And so we know the best ways to have an appointment, get there on time, being confident that, that you're going to get what you, what you expect to get there. And then, and, and hopefully have a positive experience as, as a good, a good example of government and, and, and private entities working, and, and public entities working well together.
So if someone is not ambulatory, right? Because that line is long, is there a way for them at the grounds to then be able to get by the exit or something like that? I mean, or do they just have to, they have to go to their healthcare provider?
Yeah, so if someone has an appointment and they have, if they're, and they've, you know, if they're not ambulatory, you know, we have staff looking out for them and, and will help them to make sure their experience is, is quick as possible. You, you mentioned the healthcare provider. So I know it's, it's a, it's a common answer from us to say, call your healthcare provider. There will be a time for that. The time's not today, right? If you call your healthcare provider, they're going to say, I don't have vaccine yet. Because they don't, there's not enough vaccine to get to the primary care providers who are interested and available, right? I do believe that Kaiser and Sutter are ramping up their plans. They might have something that looks more like centralized vaccination clinics like ours at the grounds. I don't have a date, I don't have a location. But for Sutter and Kaiser, it behooves them to centralize such things, right? So, so expect to see that and, and expect to see some announcements relatively soon. I think it's too early to call your primary care provider. They're getting as many phone calls as we are, but they simply don't have the vaccine. Hopefully, within a relatively short amount of time, enough vaccine will come to our community where we can allocate to every provider who, who's interested in, in providing vaccine to their patients.
So one more question and then, and then a comment. So I was glad to see the charts you showed up about, showed earlier about hospitalization and ICU capacity seeming to be trending in, in a, well, let me just say that over the weekend, the Institute of Health Metrics, the, you know, the Bill Gates, University of Washington came out and said that the, we've, we've seen the, we've seen the peak, we've crested with the winter surge. And so I know Los Angeles has probably a unique set of, of problems down there. But are, when, when are we going to be able to gather with our masks on, with our friends, much like, you know, you know, like the inauguration today, which, you know, was physically distanced? But when are we going to be able to do that again, I guess? And my comment is, you know, I'm over 65, so Deep Purple was one of my favorite groups, but not one of my favorite colors, okay? Let's just say that. But, you know, it seems like there's some consensus building around the fact that we've got to the crest. I guess it's how long the plateau is. But when do you, when do you think we'll be out gathering with our masks on?
A great, great question. And obviously, the answer is, we, we, we don't know. We're always hesitant to predict the future because so much about this pandemic has been unpredictable. But I, I do think it's, it's encouraging. You know, we're now coming up on three weeks out from, from New, New Year's. And so that was really what we were worried about, right? Was the Christmas holiday and New Year's and the gatherings that we, for sure, we saw around Thanksgiving seemed to be driving a lot of transmission. And didn't, so far, haven't seen that spike in, in cases and test positivity. Like I showed, it's, you know, it's still high, but it's, it's not shooting up. So I think all we can say is that's encouraging. But as far as reading that into the future, given how, again, with, with the vaccine distribution, you know, how that changes people's behavior, what, what we have seen is how quickly, you know, we were just back in October, you know, talk, we were talking about yellow, a yellow tier, right? And so how quickly things can change with this, with this virus. And particularly, you know, now you're hearing about different variants that might, might be, maybe can spread even more quickly. And so I would love to be able to, you know, prognosticate and say, I'm glad you're saying, when are we going to get together with our masks on? Because I, I do think for probably most of this year, gatherings will entail, you know, some, you know, distancing and masks. But, you know, it's, it's, it's really tough to say. I'd say, you know, we're looking at this, this summer, you know, I think that there'll be vaccine available to everybody by the, the summer sometime, including, you know, that, that's one of the questions around, you know, school-aged children. It's not, the vaccines really aren't approved, FDA-approved for children yet. But expect in that research to move forward. So hopefully, we'll have other groups who have access to vaccine by the summer. And I, I do think that the science will come out and show that the vaccine hopefully has, has some impact on transmission. So I think it's, you know, by, by the end of this year, I would really hope that we'll be getting, getting together and gathering again. Something that comes up is like conferences, professional organizations, and I say, don't, don't plan the conference for the spring, right? You know, fall makes a lot more sense. So I don't know. Mike is a better prognosticator. He has this magic eight ball there. So what, what say you, Mike?
I, I think that it's going to really depend, obviously, on the vaccine rollout, but also the, the percentage of the population that, that accepts it. You know, 50% is not enough. You know, we get somewhere around 70%. So imagine seven out of 10 people at a party who've been vaccinated. Even if there's virus out there, the spread, we're going to see the cases go down considerably. So as we get more vaccine, there will still be spread, but the cases are going to be fewer. And we're, we'll, we'll see that data. And, and then we'll start to know that with the vaccine. People talk a lot about herd immunity. I, I don't, I don't usually like to talk too much about it. It's complicated. But just this notion of, if most people in a room are vaccinated, then the, the spread will be less, the cases will be less, we'll see hospitalizations drop, we'll certainly see deaths drop, and then we'll know we're in the right direction. And I think then, then the, the CDC and then the state will start looking and go, okay, we're in the right, we're going, we're going in the right direction. Then I can, I think they'll start having those conversations about, you know, can gatherings increase, you know, how long do we keep the masks on? I think we have a tremendous amount of data, right? And so, and a, and a pretty decent system of, of timely surveillance. And so I think we'll start to know when it feels like, huh, I think we're doing better. So I, I think, I think we'll, I think we'll see it coming, which is unusual in, in, in an event like this. So I'm hopeful, but the timing of it, I like to, I think, I think about the school year, you know, will, will the school year start normal? That's sort of my goal, is if, if school can start normal, then I think we're, we're on the right path. I won't predict that now. That's my hope, though. I hope that kids start school and we're not worrying about the distance between desks, for example.
Well, thank you both. And I can personally attest, it was, it was, your staff was amazing on Friday, very, very cordial, patient, even though the computer inside the building was a little, you know, glitzy, but, you know, but no, you, thank them all, right?
We will. You mentioned their resilience. That's really, our, our staff has been amazing. I mean, I, I just came back from Sutter, but, you know, people like Mike have been at this, working seven days a week with no vacation, you know, no days off for, for a long, a long, long time. And so it's remarkable how resilient our staff have been, our partners, I mentioned the healthcare workers, and really, you know, well.